...to the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation under God, indivisible, with the Lord Jesus Christ.
Yeah, I'm pressed up.
I must stop to study this again, time in court though, that's all right now.
Okay.
So fourteen fifteen.
Okay, yeah.
All right, good afternoon. A lot of people here today. First order of business is, we've got two public hearings today, for one for the seeker and to change the spines, and then we have one for parking on Parkway. So I'll open the public hearings. They'll be open for a short period of time, if anybody wants to make any comments on the, on the public hearings.
Motion to open.
Motion for the public hearings to be opened?
I'll make the motion, will you open those public hearings?
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye aye.
Post?
Agree.
Anybody that wants to read, I'm not going to read them, they're up here, if you want to see them, I'll put them all on the table. Okay. Next order of business is privilege of the floor. So if you would like to speak, just state your name and where you live, and we'll go from there. Mr. Dillon?
Yes, lived down the street here, fifty-four-eleven Boswick Street, and we moved in in two thousand nineteen, and the last six years, we've had nothing but problems with our storm drain, that I wasn't aware, that went underneath my house. But the big event was that storm we had in July two thousand, time of two thousand twenty-four, storm drain fractured, we had a lot of water come in, and had a lot of damage to the cellar and stuff of that nature. Anyways, it was some repairs made, the town had always come in, make the repairs, and it's a lot of long story, I don't want to get into a lot of details, but I had dates and stuff, if you wanted to copy or if you wanted to read through it. Getting to the point is, I wasn't real satisfied, I was curious what took place when they took and tried to seal this drain up, and I had it reevaluated, I got Sean, he's my contractor that did the digging up and looked into the situation, and come to find out the drain wasn't sealed properly. Water's going through and it's coming into the cellar, and I lost about two yards of soil underneath this concrete pad, which I thought they were going to take care of all that, and apparently it wasn't, so those are, just a small expense of fifteen hundred dollars, and I'm looking, asking to see if I can recoup some of that. Now, with that said, you know, we talked about expenses and stuff like that, I can tell you, I got a lot of pictures, and kind of looked expensive for the town too, they took care of my concrete, they best quit some pipe and stuff of that nature, but I've had a lot of money for that myself, so what I'm asking for is just to have that compensation, to get that drain corrected, and I can't believe that it was such a void, I said two yards of dirt missing underneath that slab, and somebody's been collapsed, but we got that taken care of, so that's what we're here for now, right? And one other thing I'd like to mention too, and I don't know where we stand on that, Paul, that it goes from my backyard into Kate Spalding's backyard, and there's going to be more work done at some point, that goes from there up to Stewart Street, my biggest concern is we get another fracture, I mean, I just, I don't know if I can handle another, you know, three, four foot of water coming running out of that damn thing and filling up my backyard too, so. The two concerns is, I'm looking for compensation for the fifteen hundred, and what's the town doing on that fix, I know they're talking about going up to Stewart, get that repaired, so.
First of all, it's a village, and not the town. The section of pipe that is still existing, which is galvanized steel, there is no issue with that pipe, they tied it in both places, but looking forward, we want to replace that to have that whole section all plastic. Mike Ballinger was supposed to come and take the tree down, he hasn't, so he haven't done. I, at this point, there, there is no issue right there.
Well, with that said, it's all underground, I moved it under the cameras, we've seen pictures of some of the cameras and stuff, but everything that we pulled out of my yard, I've got pictures as well, all that pipe was perforated, was rotted, it was going, and I can't imagine from there up to Stewart Street, it's not in the same. Now, the thing is, when you run a camera up there, you've got water running through there, you've got earth all the way around it, it may appear like it's doing well. In addition, that up on Stewart Street, I saw how you dug that up, I got pictures of that as well, you know, the storm drains up there, the sewer drains up there, it's just a mess, and to be perfectly honest with you...
It's not a mess now, it's all replaced.
Yeah, well, we'll see how she goes, but there's still that section from Kate's driveway.
There's only this section from the end of Kate's driveway, down past the tree.
No, I'm not, I'm not...
No, I know.
I'm not combative with you on that, I mean, I'm bringing it up, you know, and before you get to that fix, if it were to fracture again, and it just, it's a little, little rough on me, so I mean, I don't know. The first time, I wasn't aware this storm drain went underneath there, and I'm having water shoot up out of the ground, and my back's door sill is only like four or five inches, and I ended up with about eight, ten inches of water in the backyard, and that's my first incident of having, having water, and you know everything ever since that, that the drain's fractured.
We just talked about it.
Yeah.
And for once, I can go through the whole scenario from day one.
I've got, I've got pictures of events and times and everything else.
So you guys have already seen all the pictures, I have pictures, I have videos of everything.
And, I mean, I'd like to have Sean mentioned today, he did the digging back there and what he found, when he looked at that drain, he evaluated, that, that drain wasn't completely sealed.
It's never gonna be.
Oh, it is now.
He hasn't had any water?
There was no water in it when you showed me the stick in it, you drilled the hole into our pipe, stuck the stick down in it, pulled it out, and said there's water in there. The video you sent me, the stick is completely dry.
Yeah, I never said anything about there water being, being watering, but...
And Paul, with that said...
His sub pumps kicked on every time it was raining.
And I like, this house was built nineteen sixty, never had any water in that cellar, ever, ever, ever. I put the sub pumps in.
Yes, it did, that was my uncle's house, the cellar was flooded once when he was in Florida, I know that.
Who was that?
Bob North's owned the house.
Yeah, Bob North's owned the house.
Right, and I actually put a plug in the cellar, cellar drain, so there was water in the cellar a long time ago, so.
So, this whole, in the board notes, this hole originated because you had called me because you had sinkholes in the backyard, which we determined, we looked around, looked around, the pool that was in the backyard, whoever filled it in, there was all this stuff in there, never cut the liner, and if you recall, when we were digging, we didn't know where that pipe went underneath your house.
The first year of two thousand twenty...
And we found that because that was a sinkhole, correct?
We didn't find the pipe until it fractured on Kate's property, and then you dug back and you saw where it was.
We found the sinkholes, which was caused by the in-ground pool that was filled in, originally.
Yeah.
That's when we were up there.
I had probably had something to do with it, but when those, when those lines came out of the ground, there was no indication that there was any damage from the pool when you came in there.
The only thing there was, I've got pictures of those pipes, they're just perforated, they're horrible.
Yep, but as you know, because I've shown you, we camered it when Paul's had that open, because I thought for sure that there was an issue with the pipe going underneath your house, we camered that all the way out to the catch base now up front, there was nothing wrong with that pipe.
It appears, I don't, I mean, you can't get a lot of...
That pipe, that pipe was at such an angle, there was no sediment on the bottom, I have the video of it.
Well, let me ask you this, if that pipe was, what you're saying, and I'm going to put a bit of common sense here, that storm, I ended up with four foot of water in my cellar going, thinking, well, we're going to have to pump this up, we're going to, I don't know what we're going to do. Well, the next day after the storm, it all drained right out, that's not going to soak into the ground that fast, that went down through that drain, that drain had to have a fracture, common sense tells you that.
You don't think that the amount of water that was coming through your backyard, hitting your foundation, wasn't going down underneath your foundation?
It's all through that pipe, I'm certain of it. And with that said, I've got pictures where it fractured on the corner of my pad, right? We watched, I think, I don't know if Joe was there, but some of his guys were there, we had pumps running there, we're talking thousands and thousands of gallons, they didn't even start to flood my cellar at that point, it was running down through that drain, but that fracture sucked all that dirt out from underneath the pad, and then with all the pressure, and then once I got four or five foot of water back there, you saw what it did to the concrete floor, she raised up about an inch and a half, and then we started having issues.
We, we have exceeded our five minutes.
Yes.
Do we want to make a decision?
I have him on the agenda.
We can move our back down on the agenda, yes. Public comment from the floor, from anybody else?
You can go first. Oh, no, you go.
Richard DeFoe, fifty-three, eighty-two Boswick. Two things, last month, we were talking about this geothermal heating system being put in by our neighbors, you were going to start a special committee, and anything been done on that?
Paul, have we worked on that at all yet?
No, that has not happened, but I do, and that was in an office later, I'm probably I'm actually meeting with Megan from the county to go over some regulations for geothermal and some other things.
Because over on Park Ave, from what I understand, they're putting another one in over there, only this is going to be a horizontal one, and take up the whole backyard of the property, and that's, that's in the works to be put in, so maybe it's something you might want to work a little bit on it. The second thing is, which I think is more important...
What about some Park Ave, is that, is that...
I don't, I don't have the name, I'll share it with you later. The second thing is, these electric bikes. I know there's nothing on the books that we have to cover it, and, and we're seeing them, like this afternoon, I was outside working around in the yard, and a young lady goes riding up the sidewalk on Boswick Street with no helmet, no, no pads on or anything, and we're seeing this all over the village, not only the electric bikes, but you're seeing them in the middle of South State Street yesterday, here's a guy riding South State Street in the middle of traffic on one of those electric bikes. The other thing also with them is the kids, the young kids got these two-wheel scooters, which again, are these electric bikes with it, and I know we don't have anything on the books, because they aren't covered by bicycles, so it's something that I think we need to look at there, coming up with something, Chuckie, I think you'll agree with that.
Yeah, we've already, I've just gotten talking to Daryl about that just a few minutes ago, and Tim did too, it is something we are going to look at, and are looking at, don't know what we're going to do with it. Like that. Mr. Burrows, do we have anybody that...
Yeah, it's only a matter of time, because you're seeing, not only kids, but grownups are using this, because they don't have a motor vehicle, or maybe a license, using these things, and they're on the street in the middle of traffic at times.
Glad you're bringing it up, because...
And on the sidewalk, too. Oh yeah, on the sidewalk, constantly, yeah. It's something I think we need, need to take a look at, and maybe come up with another special committee with it, thank you.
Mr. Austin?
A few months ago, I brought up the traffic light at Trinity, I'm going to bring it up again, the only reason I'm bringing it up again is because since, a few months ago, I have since driven through Bloomville, which has a brand-new traffic light on State Group Twelve, that has beautiful yellow blazing arrows when it's green this way, so I don't know why it can be done there on a much higher speed highway and not in the middle of Wildville. And then the other thing is, just from a safety standpoint, so the other day I was driving up through, again, green lights, north and south, there were three or four cars waiting at the red arrow, that are now backing up because they can't go, but there was absolutely no one coming down the other lane, so. I mean, I don't, I mean, I know it's a safety standard, but I don't know if there's...
What are you talking down on there?
I already have one.
Okay, you want to...
He's been addressed.
I already have, I told you last time.
We've been by point, David.
Fill me in, go ahead.
There are traffic patterns, they say it's, that's the safest pattern that they can have.
They've looked at it twice.
They've looked at it twice.
So, I got a suggestion, as the fire department, I think raising all the concern from a best standpoint too, maybe, maybe I'm wrong there.
And I guess, yeah, who would I contact at the state, I don't mind, I don't mind pushing the buttons at the state too.
Craig Orton?
It's going to be, no, it's going to be out of water town traffic.
Yeah, I just, it's...
Who would it be?
Uh...
It's a woman.
Is it a woman?
No. I'll, I'll let you know.
Yeah, just let me, I just, like I said, I just, I find it hard to believe that it's safe to do in Bloomville, or as I said the first time, all the way down Hardestwood Street, but not enough.
It's funny, Joe, that...
You're not the only one who brought this up.
Notice how they've changed what they do upon corners now too, sorry, it can be done.
Right, I mean, and even from the fire department's standpoint, it's the same concept with me, when my trucks are coming back from a call, they have to wait for the green arrow, if I have three trucks there, we're going to be lined all the way back up to State Street, we'll be right down the middle lane the whole way, because we were waiting for a green arrow, yet no one's coming, so.
Would you give him a name, please, Paul?
I don't know, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Next, Mr. Comet, good afternoon.
My name is Mike Comet, five-three-seven-nine Stowe Street, my wife and I have lived at Stowe Street for twenty-five, twenty-six years now, the Stewart Street, and I know that this is a private entity, it's private business, there's probably nothing the village can do about it, but we've got four minutes if we all want to go up at four-thirty and try and get down Stowe Street, because at four-thirty, when the DSS building lets out, it is a madhouse. However, that's not really the problem, the problem is coming down Stowe Street, or trying to turn onto Stowe Street, many times, I don't know if it's the Mega Millions craze, or if it's, we really need our ice cream now craze, or what it is, but it's almost impossible to go down through there without almost being backed into by people coming out of Stewart's. They seem to avoid any rules of the ru, rules of the road or courtesy, they back out of their parking places and back directly on the Stowe Street without even looking. Someone's going to get hurt, someone's going to get killed, it might be one of the electric bikes, it might be my son, my wife, or myself. I sent a letter to Mayor Sammon last week, saw that I was on the agenda by the graces of someone that actually looks at the news, and decided to come and pitch my case a little bit, that we need to do, as a village, needs to do something about that. Obviously, a wall is not going to work, but I think the village really needs to work with Stewart's to adjust their traffic pattern before something happens, because when something does happen, and neither party wants to take ownership, I guess you could say, of it, now the village is on notice that a dangerous situation exists.
I have a question for our police chief, if they back out onto the highway, is that a movie violation?
Not into a village street, it's on the state highways.
Who's liable if an accident occurs there, Stewart's or the village?
Driver ultimately, I don't, I don't think you can put, blame the village on either one of them, I...
Now, is that truly a village street? We've never really gotten an answer on that, because some of the time, the county goes up through and plows it, sometimes the town plows, is it shared services, because I don't think that's...
No, it's a village street.
It is, it's a village street, okay. So he's up, and I agree with him, because when you, even if you try to pull on there, all that brush and stuff that's up next to that building, is, it blocks the view to look up the street to see if anybody's coming, that should be cut back so you can see, you know what I'm talking about, Paul.
English has got it back in the...
Yeah, yeah, but it's, it's getting bad again. I noticed it actually, I noticed it today when I pulled out of there, because I couldn't hardly see off the road.
I've talked to him a few times in the past, and he has got it back.
And if you're trying, if you're trying to, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Have you communicated at all with Stewart's?
I have contacted Stewart's corporate, I guess you could say, in the Albany area, and never received any reply back.
Did you have any documentation?
I had satellite photos that I took, I kind of counted the number of incidents that I had in about a month, sent that included into my letter, and once again, no response. I just, I, I just trying to protect myself, my family, and ultimately the village, because something is going to happen there. For what reason, has not happened yet, but we all know, if you've ever tried to come down through there, please do, okay, eight o'clock in the morning, trying to get down through there, or on a heavy Lotto day, try to go down through, you're going to get green, or you're going to come very close.
And the police department had, two weeks ago Saturday, two ATVs come down...
Oh, that's, that's non-stop, there's non-stop.
Is that a problem on Stowe Street?
Big, I, I get, I would say...
And it includes ATVs at Stowe's once too.
It's sleds, it's ATVs, it's four-wheelers, up and down, you can put a hundred signs up there, and it's not going to matter, and the, the speed line, the speed sign in front of my house, that doesn't help at all either.
One of them, according to, to the chief, has suspended driver's licenses.
Okay. Why it's still in down the street?
No, what I'm saying is, doesn't even have a driver's license, and if somebody were to look at a county map, I realize it's not a village issue, because the village streets are all closed, but this map is just riddled with open roads with hardly any trails, and that's what's causing the problem on your street and coming down twenty-six, so, and that's an issue too. And, and we will, to the best of our ability, when it comes to ATVs, we're towing them over, we're ticketing them, and they've got twenty minutes, or we're towing them out of the village ourselves, because once we do that, if we let them go and something happens, we're liable.
And the, the compound that is directly across from the, the side of Stewart's, they also park on the north edge of Stowe Street, just around the corner from, I still call it the old radio shack building, they park in that area right up before the bridge, and when that fills up, you're not getting around that corner, and if you do get around the corner, you better have airbags.
We could change that.
Well, Mike, what I'll do is, I'll try to, I'll try to contact corporate, Stewart's corporate, and see what I can get out of them.
I would appreciate it.
I think it would be good if you could document all of this, to give to us.
In what form, just how many times I almost get killed?
Issues, yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can definitely put it off, a, a number of instances were in the letter to Mayor Sammon.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, this will...
They all happen, okay.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. I was the one that asked, I believe, or I emailed this on to put you on the agenda, because I did read this, and I, I appreciate it, it's welcome, and if there's something we can do, we need to do it, I don't know, you know, at this point, what, it's kind of like what these gentlemen are raising, we need to deal with the state on that, a lot of times, there's some things that we can't deal with, but I believe on Stowe Street, that is a village street.
I, I just feel that, you know, now that this is written into the record, and the comments are made, the village is kind of put on notice, if anybody ever does want to come back, back to the village, and they want to review old tapes and old literature, they, they may have a case against the village.
I, and I, I will go back to what Ms. Dorlin says, not disagree with Mike, if, if there's a traffic violation where they failed to yield the right of way, I mean, I suppose the village could be, or a town, or a state can be held liable for a lot of things, and then if it stands up in court, it stands up in court.
If they backed into the street and caused an accident, for sure there'd be a following ticket.
Yeah, and even if we, even if, if we do, I don't know how you put up, make a law that says you can't back out of, if it's not a traffic law, that I don't know, but if there's something we can do to make that street safer...
It'd be a village ordinance thing, but I don't know if you want to get into that.
I mean, it may be something as simple as asking Stewart's to, instead of giving ninety-degree marks, put in a diagonal mark, so that when your person's backing out, it kind of affects your schedule, that's just some pain, I don't think, that's up to you, and I just want to put out there.
Mr. Burrows, I think we should reach out to Stewart's.
I thought Paul could send me one.
Do we, do we want to do it from an attorney's standpoint, or do we want to do it from...
Paul, contact him and then include my office, you know, see...
Mike, was that in Bossum Spa, is that where the corporate was?
Yes.
Zeratoga Springs.
Zeratoga Springs, Bossum Spa, Albany, one big city.
I've benefited from that.
I'll, I'll try to contact him tomorrow, at least try to do something.
Privilege of the floor then.
Yes, I have, I have a couple.
Hold it, please reduce yourself.
I'm Dr. Ramon, I live on Stowe Street, I actually have a couple, a couple things. One, I'd like to know if any of the board members or Lions Club's members. Now, the Lions Club has violated your ordinance on grad sales two years in a row, and nothing's being done. They held, I sent a picture to Danny, they advertised it for five days, having grad sales, consecutive days, and they put signs up on poles, and nothing's being done about it.
Where is this?
Lions Club at the fairgrounds, yeah. We don't have jurisdiction on the fairgrounds, that's county property, am I wrong?
It's county property, it's ag society property. I don't know about jurisdiction.
The county fairgrounds is...
Lewis County Ag Society.
I think if the village rolled them a ladder, telling them that they violated their ordinance, that they probably would stop, I think that would be a really good idea.
We do have three-day rule of tortures.
I'd have to take a look at it and see if it understands and applies to that.
Yeah, because code enforcements won't enforce it, I want the code enforcements, and they wouldn't enforce it.
I have to look at, I have to see first of all, but I have to look at it.
You know, just because they're, they're an organization, doesn't mean that, that they should be exempt from it.
Mr. Burrows, could I look into that if we have any answers?
And you'll let me know about what happens?
Well, let me know what the answer is, and then we'll go from there, which would probably be, we would send the Lions a letter requesting that their, their grad sale be three days.
Right, well, I would, I would actually also suggest that when you send them the letters, send them the rules too, send them the, the code and everything.
That would be right, we would pull the law in the letter.
And my other thing is, what are they, what are we going to do for Halloween for the kids, I've seen it being way too dangerous for the kids to go out trick-or-treating, especially over by Dr. Geller's office, by the school, last year I drove through there, and there must have been five hundred kids walking around, and people driving through, and it was very, I almost see three kids get hit. On Halloween? On Halloween, and especially this year, it's going to be on a Friday night, so more parents are going to have more time to do it.
We do put our staff on...
I know you guys do, I know you do, I just thought maybe there was something different we could do, maybe...
Well, they have the Halloween town.
Right, but maybe, like, maybe even if you, I, I don't, no, you can do this, but like block off part of the street, for, say from four-thirty until eight o'clock at night, because that's usually when most of the kids are out.
Part of what street?
Like block off from the school, down to the next corner, and then from the Catholic church, I know it's probably not feasible, but, but...
Especially right now, it's the fifteenth of October.
Right, right.
We'll have, we'll have staff on.
Yeah, we know, it's one of those nights, people...
All we can do is, we can, we can ask through our, our media, that people again realize, understand that we've got kids out there, that they're excited, and we can be very, very careful.
Yes, yes, it is, I mean, I drove, and I was very careful, but it was still, I mean, there's ungodly amounts of kids on them streets, I just, I was amazed to see how many kids are out.
And I'm going to cut you off, you have five minutes left, thank you, Douglas, you're all. Next, anybody? Okay, the public hearings are still open, at this point in time, we have the nine-seventeen twenty-five minutes in, either in front of you, or you review them via the Skype, Wendy sent out, I'll take a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll make the motion to accept those in there.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Mr. Turilian has audited the bills along with this jug, and he will give a report on the three funding sources.
Our general fund, we have claims of thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and three dollars forty-four cents, sewer fund, eleven thousand four seventy-three thirty-eight cents, and our water fund, fifty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars seventy-three cents, I have audited all the vouchers, and I make a motion that they be paid as soon as Gina finishes, she's all finished, okay, I make a motion that they be paid. I make a motion that they be paid.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion's carried. We will move now to unfinished business, uh, about two weeks ago. Mr. Dinesh, myself, and Mr. Terrellian attended a meeting with the South Louis School District. Mr. Primo, the superintendent, was there, and about 15 of his staff, when we walked in the room, we were just, I guess for lack of better words, blown away by, by the attendance. And were extremely impressed with how they ran the summer rec program. At this point in time, we have, uh, Bob Mullins, J.D. Ross, Gina, I'm gonna take more of a lesser role in, in looking for, moving forward with this summer rec program. And in the meantime, I think everybody got the email that I received, if you didn't, I received them email from the county, uh, from the board. And they're gonna have some meetings, and they, they picked some dates, Gina, I will let you know because I, if you can attend, I would like you to attend. I, I will attend with you, but I, you know, I'm, I'm assuming you'll take the leadership role. So, we're, we're trying to make the summer rec program, a- as a village, we're not in the kid business, and it's becoming more and more, uh, difficult for us to, to be as involved as the village has been in the past. A lot of other school districts are running there, so we've, we've researched them, there's a lot of good ideas, so we just wanna let the community know that summer rec program is very, very important to us. And, uh, we're hoping that, uh, we can make, enhance it even, even more. South Louis does some pretty interesting things, and, uh, we learned, I think, uh, Paul and Chuck, I think we learned a lot from, from that meeting. I brought, uh, brought my notes, but I guess I left them in the other room of that meeting, but it was a very good meeting. Next on the agenda is Level Heights and Lewis County Apartments and Snowbelt Housing. And Bob Loud is here from Snowbelt Housing, uh, uh, to talk about, to the, what they have done to, uh, with the revisions, and I'm gonna yield to Florida, Mr. Loud.
So, uh, I'd like to express, express our gratitude and commitment, uh, again, for the opportunity to rehabilitate Lewis Apartments in Level Heights, um, with the village and the town's support. We've had several exchanges with the pilot agreement, um, and I was able to strong-arm the developer in Syracuse, um, and gave you everything you asked for, including the 3% increase year-over-year as opposed to 2%. Uh, the verbiage, um, regarding the, uh, payment of the water and sewer charges, um, and, yeah, so I'm, I believe we're in final form?
Well, in, in the contract, Mr. Burles caught that when you redid the contract, one of the things that we saw was, you reverted back to the 2%.
Oh.
So there was a, so I think...
Yeah.
There was a title there. I, I know there's some questions on the 40 years versus the 30 years, uh, that we talked about originally.
Okay.
And one of the other things is, by us being a host agreement, that's something, somebody said, well, we realize that trying to get a host agreement would take a year, year and a half, and we're not looking for that. But we also know that based on that, we're saving developers a lot of money, and, uh, is there any, is there anything that, uh, developer, or the, uh, the owners would be willing to, to offer us in that regard? Because this is a long-term, uh, this is a long-term thing, that, uh, we're committing well past our time on this board.
Yeah.
For the constituents of the village and...
Yes. The main benefit is a $14 million rehabilitated apartment complex that no longer has any code violations and can live up, uh, to the needs of the community for the next 30 years. That's the main benefit that we have here. So, I'll get the verbiage changed to, uh, 3%, but, um, as you know, uh, we're in a very challenging environment with construction cost escalations and price, and the margins on this, this are so incredibly thin. So, I think what we've presented is a very fair offer for the village, uh, and the town and the school district. But, um, I'd be happy to discuss anything, um, but we've given you what you'd like.
I'm going to ask the board if they have any questions, other than what I've proposed.
Actually, I do. I mean, you just mentioned for the next 30 years, but, but yet the, the pilot for 40 years.
I think a number of us aren't really satisfied with the 40-year pilot, and I don't think there's been enough discussion about it to mock ourselves yet.
We can, uh, we can negotiate the term of the pilot, that's not a problem.
Yeah, I, I think that's where I was at too, that when we originally talked about it, it was 30 years and it was gonna be reviewed prior to the 16th year.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
That was the verbiage, I was...
The verbiage in the agreement as it stands...
But in here, it says 40 and 2% yet, so...
No, I, they, they might have sent you the wrong version, I do apologize about that, but, yeah, no. Yeah, prior to the beginning of the 16th year of the term, uh, the agreement, the village town shall renegotiate in good faith the pilot, that's still...
I think that's how we signed it, a 15-year, because the pilot is supposed to be 30.
Yeah, it'll be a 30-year pilot with the renegotiation at year 16.
So, are we, other than that, what does the board wish to do? The town re- has to review it also, apparently, because according to Mr. Burles, they, because Wendy brought this up, they are a, a stakeholder, so they do have to sign it, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Burles?
That's my understanding, that's my understanding, that the town would be a party as well, and sort of the pilot that you've, uh, you've presented, it includes the town as a part of it.
It does, yes, the town and the village both need to sign the pilot.
Do we want to discuss this further? Do we wanna get the language changed to the 30 years and the 3%?
I think we definitely need to get the language changed before we act on this at all. I mean, we certainly can't...
If we change the language to 30 years and 3%, are there any other changes that you'd like to see? 'Cause I don't wanna keep hunting this down the road, I kinda wanna finalize the discussions.
I, I don't see anything, I mean, as long as those two, at least those two items are changed.
That was my original approval.
So, I guess, I guess the motion that I would entertain, uh, or suggest is, that based on that, when, when we get the final contract, we'll let Mr. Burles look at it, and if he agrees, give me the permission to sign it.
You'll have the agreement tomorrow with the changes.
What I, what I did, in abundance of caution, was I, I recognize that the way that the board would act, we buy resolution. We prepare a, a, a simple resolution for the board's consideration, it could be considered tonight, sometime down the road, or never at all. But, but a formal resolution, I, I suspect you'll need a formal resolution.
That it's a, it's a...
Yeah, so, so with that, you have a potential resolution, you could, you could, if the board was comfortable, um, consider to adopt a resolution contingent upon the pilot that you presented with, being amended to reflect a 30-year term rather than 40-year term, and, and the 3% escalator rather than 2%. That, that's up to you as a legislative body. If, if you, if you're inclined it to proceed tonight with those two conditions, you, you might...
I'd take a motion based on Mr. Burles's, uh, suggestion of how the, the wording of that to be, to be used as it was written, or as it was spoken, if somebody feels so inclined.
I'll make the motion contingent on those two, uh, 30 years and 3%.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Oh wait, that's a roll call.
Yeah, and so, so, so your resolution that you have, I mean, it's a draft resolution, so I understand that what you're proposing is to consider adopting a resolution contingent upon two changes. Um, one, the pilot would need to be amended to reflect no more than a 30-year term, and, and also, the, the escalator has to be changed to, from 2% to a 3% annual escalator.
Myself, yes. Charlie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
We should be good.
Absolutely. You'll have the document tomorrow.
Very good.
Resolution tonight. It was him and, and you to, to authorize the sign adopt and take those steps.
Okay.
So it gives you the authority if those two changes are...
Okay, thank you. Just authorize the sign. And then we're gonna hold it back to you.
Yes, yes. We're back to unfinished business, and again, it's part of the public hearing, uh, to repeal or replace. What, what that, that public hearing amounts to is, we have penalties for, for land usage, uh, not land usage, for, uh, uh, violation of zoning for land, and, uh, for, uh, violations of the ag market law per do. We're taking out the, the terms for prison because that's harsh, that's not what we're trying to look for, we're trying to correct that so that it's more, it's more of a, um...
Yeah, so you're...
A cooperative type thing, we just want, we want the rules to be followed correctly, so that's what that's on there for, and, uh, we'll leave that on the agenda.
Yeah, so effectively, the penalty provision, uh, technically, if you were to look at your local, uh, on the books, a vi- a, a, an offense could rise to the level of being a misdemeanor, that's a crime. And that could open the door to somebody being, being imprisoned for a period of time, and it would be a criminal record that goes along with it. And, and the goal, as I understand, is, is compliance, and the, the board's view is, is that the penalty ought to be a financial penalty alone, which would be a violation. It can still be harsh, um, but, but it's not gonna be jail time and it's not gonna be a crime, or that, that's really what the change would be, if, if it were approved by the board.
And we'll leave those public hearings open for the time being, we'll close them in a, in a few minutes. The next on the agenda was to amend 18962 Parkway Drive. Mr. Burles gave us four different scenarios, and it's not a, a north-south, it's an east-west, and what, what I was thinking is, this is, we just discussed this, and I am at the top of the board. It would be on the west side of the road, it would only be April 30th, uh, April 30th, for two hours to allow people during the summer to use the park. Other than that, the, the parking would, would stay the way it is. And that would be, it would be for the length of the street, with the idea that we can shorten that at any time, but we can't expand it, so that's why the law was written, written up that way. So, that's, that's what that's about.
That we talked last meeting, right?
Yes, that's the way we talked about it.
So, the way we talked about it last meeting was because of the DRI, and the projected project over there, we were gonna put in for both sides. So that, we could limit the amount of parking spots when everything gets done up there. So that's why we put in both sides, because potentially, potentially on the opposite side of Veterans Park, there's gonna be an island, where there's gonna be parking, that's why we said both sides.
I apologize, I forgot that, that's right.
So it should've been just both sides.
So do you want to do the 30 years for...
So it's gonna be, it's gonna be east and west side.
So, so, since, since that road isn't, isn't a straight road, and it, it's got a curve, and if you wanna leave it as both sides, that's probably...
That's what I'm writing here.
And then, then with it, because I understand the directions, you're thinking of, of having, we'll call it a seasonal, which would be, but the season you described, Mr. Mayor, was April 30th to October 30th. 30th or 30th?
I'm fine with it, as long as we can post specific spots, I'm, I'm not fine with doing the whole thing.
Right, right, right. What, what we can do is, by doing that that way, we can expand it if we have to, if we think we need to, or we can contract it. We also have found that Lions Parking Lot down on the Fourth Corner already has parking, so we will, we will address that, take care of that issue, there's no signs up right now, but that's already a law.
There are signs, they're just not the right signs. And they were placed a long time ago, so I'm in the process...
I never used that parking lot, so...
I'm in the process of getting new signs put up.
Very good, thank you.
So are we going with April 30th to October 30th? That's the one you wanted to present for today?
Yes, I, that's myself, so...
What's the board?
Both sides.
Both sides, okay.
Yeah, both sides.
April 30th to October 30th?
Sure.
Okay. School Zone Trinity Ave. You're gonna notice that signs are up there, but we need to schedule a public hearing because we can't enforce it yet because it's not the law, but we're, we're, we're being proactive, so we've already put the signs up. Uh, I'd like to schedule a public hearing for that, uh, uh, next month, November 19th, for, for the speed zone to be, uh...
Extended.
Extended to...
So it's gonna be extended down to West Street?
Yes. Motion for a public hearing?
I'll make a motion, we have that public hearing.
Second?
What's the date?
The 19th.
19th, 19th.
Yep.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carried. We're, uh, next on the agenda is 5393 Bostick Street, that's, uh, Mr. Dibble.
Yeah. 5411.
5411. I'm sorry, I had the wrong address. Okay, that's for you, anyway.
First mistake I didn't make today.
Yeah. I've made many. So, do you...
Well, Wendy, the rule is, you can retire when you don't make any mistakes.
Oh, yeah. That's not gonna happen.
That's why I've officiated football for 46 years, I'm a football, I officiate...
I don't know, are you gonna continue with Mr. Dibble now?
Uh, we're going to, we're going to discuss with the board at this point what we feel that, uh, uh, we should do, and I'll take comments from any of the four board members, and we'll, we'll go from there.
I guess I just wanna clarify, did you get, did you communicate, a job that was $1,500, did you communicate that need to the village board prior to the work being done?
I did. I talked to Paul and I talked to Danny.
So the job is already done?
Yes.
Not before the job was done.
Yes.
You didn't communicate before you started it?
We dug it up to find out, to, to discover what we found. When I discovered it, I talked to Paul, Paul said he had to get with Dan, I ran into Dan, the next day, told Dan what we found, how we were gonna fix it.
So originally, you had told me, and I believed it, that Mr. Dibble had called me because you were looking at a way to eliminate the water in the backyard, to get it around the house to go out front. So you contacted DOT to see if you could put it in the catchment system, 'cause I believe that was a...
That was last, that was, that was last year.
Yeah.
So, every time it rained, whether it be a quarter of an inch or two inches, he had to put sub pumps in his basement, and every time it rained, you could just hear the water trickling in. Every 45 seconds to a minute, they were kicking on.
To be honest with you, those pumps were put in so if water were to somehow get into the house, whatever, but there was tile put in underneath that concrete, that goods put in. And that's why I put some storm drains in over on the other end, and every time we get rain or whatever, I think I may have sent you a video on it, they will run nonstop, and, and you can just hear the water gushing in there. There're probably two and a half, three-inch diameter, uh, lines, and the wa- they're just right full of water, there's two sub pumps in there, and, um, unfortunately, the only way I'd have to direct it out is up the front of the house, and it's kind of a sight to sore eyes, but...
So...
After this correction.
So what I did, is we were gonna regrade the property so water wouldn't run into his basement through the door. But there was another problem there, 'cause the sub pumps kept kicking on, so I excavated the back of the property, we found the pipe, there's a lot of water around the pipe. But the major problem we found was his back patio had a, a seven-foot by eight-foot, by some places, eight-inch void under his concrete patio. That was eroded when this whole problem first happened. So, when we found that, that made me believe that the water was coming into his patio, underneath his concrete, over to the foundation, down the foundation, and that's why his sub pumps were running all the time.
Right, 'cause there's gotta be a void underneath his basement due to the amount of water that was under there because of the floods.
So, so, that's when I talked to you, and you said that your contractor that was there, you watched them fill that in? They, underneath the pad? Yes. In which I have pictures of, when we were there, and it was my guy, it wasn't Paul's, it was Darren's boy.
Because the corner of the concrete pad had been, had been washed away, a little section of it, and I remember, I specifically remember you saying, can you get some material in there? Well, we, we never explored anything underneath the pad, it wouldn't have been, why would we? You know, why would, we just put, we put crusher run underneath that corner to keep that lip from breaking off.
Right, so, so when we, when I got in there and discovered that, we realized there was a huge void under there. So, what, what I did is we actually closed cell, spray foam that whole void, um, and we filled that in, and that actually solved the problem. Um, and we filled that in and that actually solved the problem. Um, and then we finished filling in the rest of the pipe. Um, that, that should have been a, this whole thing that we did to fix those two things should have been like a $3,000 repair. But I did him a favor and hopefully you guys a favor and just charged him what the materials cost, which was 15, it was like $1,490 something, $1,500. So after talking to Paul and talking with Dan, they both kind of seemed like, that's, that's fair, let's say we can do it to reimburse you. And now it's kind of snowballed into this and it's, it's $1,500 to fix a problem and put an end to this whole thing. Um, and it's, it's something that could have been caught and repaired at the beginning of this and it just wasn't.
If I recall, what I said Sean was, it seemed, it seemed, uh.
Reasonable.
Reasonable. And I was adding to the board. I did.
Yes, you said we'll see.
I did. I do remember saying that. Go ahead. I can still want to say something.
So what happened was the board reviewed the matter and got advice from me. And, and based upon that, the board asked me to send a letter to Mr. Dibble. And I, I'd done that, that, that addressed some of the legal questions. That letter's now a public document. If I, may I read that? Cause it's part of the page.
Absolutely.
So I sent the letter dated August 26th to Mr. Dibble regarding the request for reimbursement of $1,500. Dear Mr. Dibble, my office serves as attorneys for the village of Wildville. The village board reviewed and considered your request for reimbursement of $1,500 to Hodge Creek Excavating. The village board respectively declines to provide any reimbursement. The village's decision is based upon three reasons for this position. Number one, the village has no liability for the scenario referenced in your letter request. Number two, the village has no contract with you nor Hodge Creek Excavating for any of the services performed. And number three, any reimbursement to you would constitute an unconstitutional gift in violation of New York State Constitution, Article 8, Section 1. The village board considers the matter closed. So I, I authored that letter. I mailed it to Mr. Dibble, got a telephone call back from him, discussed it briefly, not substantively. And, and with it, his, his question was, could he approach the village board? I said, well, sure. The village board is always ready, willing, and able to, to speak with citizens on any number of matters. So if he wants to speak with the village board, he can. I, I've given advice, but the village board, you are the, the legislative body, the executive body. You can certainly consider anything if you want, including you have the, the authority to vary from that earlier determination that was rendered. But that was the baseline. For now, Mr. Dibble's here. He's, he's raising some of those questions again and it sounds to me like he wants you to reconsider your position. You have, you have the ability to, to, to stick to it. Can I comment? One way or another, but that's, that's really where you are at that point.
I'm going to yield the floor to Mr. Dibble.
Um, a few years before that, we had an issue and we replaced the pipe, Paul, I mentioned. Is there a chance we could have that redirected around the side of the house? Except that's not going to happen. I'm telling you, if that storm drain did not go underneath my house, I wouldn't be having any of these issues. She fractured. I didn't get down there and look at it, but I'm sure Paul, you and the gentleman in Paul's and them there, they saw that fracture. That water was sucking right down in and that's what took the dirt underneath the pad. And getting to the other argument, that storm drain wasn't sealed completely, which you admitted that you couldn't possibly even.
Of course not.
Sean just explained to you how we could do it.
75%.
Yeah. And what, and what's happening, when the ground gets saturated, it's finding its way in there and it's coming underneath that pad. That's what the issue is going into these sub pumps. I mean, they're just two sub pumps working like the devil. We've had rain, uh, I've had a few, you know, a couple inches come down. I've had no problems at all. Those pumps haven't kicked on for nothing. We could say, yeah, it's been dry, but there's been quite a bit of water. Unfortunately, where I am, everything comes my way, you know, it's just, but that storm drain has been an issue. Getting back to, you were saying we had sinkholes and stuff, but in addition to that, I couldn't understand, why would we have water gushing out of the ground? There had been a lot of pressure on that storm drain to do what it was doing. And that added additional water to my backyard when this whole thing started and I started having the water issues. We couldn't find the pipe. It fractured in Kate's property. We did find it. We came down to my property. I asked if we could move it. We couldn't move it. And then we had the big storm and we got the issues that were happening. Um, I know we talked one time about you've got a budget and what your revenues are and I have a budget and what my revenues are. And if we were to put a percentage on yours versus mine, I'm sure mine well exceeds yours. So I'm just asking for a little compensation for the damages that I've had Sean.
Which resolved, what we did repair resolved the problem. The sub pumps have not, granted it's a dry year, but we got two inches of rain the other day and yet zero, the pumps never kicked on or nothing.
And I'm saying to you folks, the board members, your board members, your job is to kind of rule on this, rule on that, from the attorney point, but as a homeowner, put any weight in my shoes and what I went through and what would you be looking at? I'm, I, I, I got pictures. I've got, I could sit here for hours and talk to you about my losses and what we went through and the stress and this and that and everything else. So I never came and I asked for anything. Paul was great, was always getting my backyard, trying to make the best he could of it, but I never asked for any compensation of what I lost down in the cellar to finish the basement in there, washers, dryers, furnace, uh, the list goes on. I had a bedroom, you know, king size bed, a kid's playroom down there, TV, this, that, and the, I just sucked it up, did what I had to do with it and, you know, Sean pointed out to me like, hey, look at this issue here. I'm just trying to get reimbursement, that little bit of a tacking. But again, put yourself in my shoes and what would you be doing?
And the only thing he's asking for the reimbursement for is something that should have been corrected when it was exposed last year. It was, it was an oversight or whatever, but, and that's, the, the total job we did there was over nine grand. He's only asking for the extra reimbursement for, for that. And that's something I did.
And so run those pumps where I haven't got to worry about losing power. I had to tie in a generator onto the place for an expense there because those pumps were equipped around it. I'd flood the cellar out the way that water's coming in a hurry. Again, I ask you to put yourself in my shoes, if it was your house.
Well, it's a tough call, I think, because there were some or other people that had a whole lot of damage in the village too. You know what I'm saying? And I'm not.
There has, but a drain situation at my house, I've been dealing with for six years and I have documentation, but I could keep here for hours going through it. I'd have to pull out paperwork and stuff like that. I don't think anyone's had the issues with a drainage for that pad, with that drain that I got going.
I'm just going by, you know, like what Mr. Burrows said about the gift thing too. I don't, we as board, I'm sure don't want to open up a can of worms or somebody else is going to come forward.
I'm not asking for a gift. I'm just asking for the work that was done.
No, but what I'm saying is what he said, he said about the New York State law, it would be considered a gift.
How you justify when you call it a gift?
Cause we don't have a contract with Mr.
No, you don't.
And we didn't have a contract and it was done, it was done ahead of time before the board could even approve it. That's the problem I have.
It was a surprise.
If, if in fact, if, if we do approve it now and I sympathize for sure, as a homeowner, I had flood damage way up on the hill there, above, you know, everybody did. I sympathize, but are we opening up a can of worms? I'm going to direct it. If somebody else comes along.
Just, just one more time I want to say.
Are we liable?
I, I would prefer not to, to express an opinion in public session on that issue.
We can go into executive session. Maybe we should.
I'd like to say one thing, that after the repair was done to the pipe, the water coming into his basement got worse. That's why he had to install the sub pumps. After the correction that we did up there, it was fixed.
No problems.
So.
And I'm not asking, I mean, if I wanted compensation, I could tally up a bill of about 30, 40,000 dollars. I'm not asking for that. I'm asking for something that was supposed to have been repaired. It was supposed to have been repaired properly and I assumed that it was, but I had an inclination something was going on. So when he started excavating my backyard, I said, could you take a look at that? These are the issues. It wasn't done. It was supposed to be repaired.
What I would, what I would request is, uh, when we finish this meeting, we go into executive session.
Yeah, can we confer with our attorney again? Cause we have to basically. I mean, that's our job.
We will do that.
Well, when you're saying gift, I mean, that's, I don't know.
I'm just going by what he said in the letter.
The reimbursement is not to Hodge Creek. It's he has paid, this thing now.
Well, that's a gift.
I paid him.
That's what makes it a gift.
But, but it's not a gift. It's a.
Cause you're, you're a taxpayer. He's a contractor. Really the contract bill should have come to the village if that's how that was going to go down.
Well, I think a contract bill originally came to the town where Paul was.
I was, I was telling you how it, how it comes across as a gift.
We're neither one of us lawyers, but I'm saying, Paul's got paid for what they were supposed to do.
I think we're going to go into executive session and discuss this.
Yeah, we need to.
Because we could, like, like Mr. Dibble said, we can discuss this all night. Uh, we now have in front of us, um, and I've discussed this with Mr. Burrows before the meeting, Solar, Solar on Earth. And I guess I'm going to let you speak a half a lot. We feel that we, we don't have a comfort level with this at this point. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Burrow, to, to move forward with this without, without further review.
Well, so Solar on Earth apparently provided, uh, six contracts to the village. There were probably seven, wasn't it?
16 pages each.
Yeah. So I, I, they were emailed to me and I, I took a quick look at them. And, and with that, he wanted some guidance out, give you guidance in open session. With respect to the contracts, in its simplest sense, all a contract is, is a meeting of the minds. We understand, we agree, the other side understands and agrees. It's a meeting of the minds and memorialized. So when I looked at the documents, Solar on Earth, I, I've got to confess to the board, I don't understand them. I, I've looked at them, I don't understand them. So, so that doesn't mean that, that, that you don't and you can't, you won't, but I'm just saying when I looked at them, I do not understand what the credit is that you're getting, how it's calculated. And so from my standpoint, not as an elected official, just as a lawyer, I, I don't understand it. So because I don't understand it, I'm uncomfortable. That's number one. That doesn't mean it's not a good deal. I'm just saying, I, I don't understand them. Number two, um, my obligations protect you. And when I look at it, um, these agreements are only as good as the people behind them. Um, I, I, I don't know, I'll call the enemy Solar on Earth, whatever, but I know that if there's a dispute, it's to be resolved by what's known as arbitration. Arbitration is, uh, is a much more relaxed standard than, than we deal with with local courts. And the, the problem with arbitration is, is it's time consuming and formal rules of evidence don't apply. I don't like that. That doesn't necessarily help you. I like to know what the rules are with arbitration. You won't know what the rules are. You can't reverse a decision from an arbitrator. And the reason that's an issue is that sometimes with agreements like this, if there's a shortfall, if you're not paid the appropriate amount, aggrieved parties like you could band together and, and work as a class to get reimbursement from the entity. By putting an arbitration clause in, they prevent you from doing that. It's not necessarily bad, but it just means that you're, you're losing some of the rights you might otherwise have. I, I don't like that. If you, if, the, the third, the third thing that I have is, is this, um, as a governmental body, um, normally you have the ability to, um, to, to void agreements, terminate agreements with, with means of requirements. Now, these, each of these, seven of them, they're 20-year contracts. They're 20-year contracts that, that the other party gets to renew for five-year options. So they go on and on and on. Now, when you look at them though, it does give you the ability to terminate a contract, but when you terminate a contract, you must give at least one full year's notice. You got to give at least one year's notice. The problem is, is then once you give the one year's notice, you, you're faced with a penalty. The penalty is, is the other party has the right to find someone else that will step, bless you, will step in your shoes to, to be a part of the agreement. And if you can't, they can't find anybody, you pay a penalty. The penalty is, is four, four cents per kilowatt hour, I don't know how many kilowatts you're dealing with. But, so the point is, is, is if you, if you enter into the contract and if all of a sudden down the road, you decide that it's not what you thought it was and you're not comfortable with it, you got to give one full year's notice and then the penalty provision, like looking at it, is, seems to be steep. But again, I, I don't understand how they're kept going to calculate the penalty. So I, I'm gun shy on that. Now again, I, I'm just giving an honest answer. You know, I, I, I don't really understand it, but what aspects I do understand. I'm a little bit uncomfortable, uh, but that doesn't mean it's not a good deal. It's just, ah, I, I just looked at it briefly and I spoke to the mayor and I'm trying to be open with you in open session. So I, I have some, some concerns.
And I feel the same way.
Yeah.
Uh, especially when, I'm going to be quite honest, you need to do this now because I think I can get you tempted now.
It's very cautious.
And I'm a salesman. I know how that works. I mean, you, you don't, you don't do sales like that.
Again, I'm, I'm not saying that it's a bad deal. I'm not saying that, that it wouldn't be lucrative for the village. It's just, I don't understand the proposed agreement on that level. And I'm, I'm nervous that if there's a problem with it, we can't use the normal rules to, to resolve it. You got to go arbitration. And then once you sign, if you sign, you, you, for each of those separate contracts, you're faced with a penalty. But that, you give at least one year's notice and, and the penalties look to me like they could be considerable. So I, I, I'll leave it at that. Let me ask them. Should we table that? Yep. Now, what you could do, those you could, if you're otherwise comfortable, say, well, wait a minute, maybe they would amend the document. Cause you can amend contracts with a agreement of the party and say you could amend it if they take this provision out or that provision out. And maybe they could explain what the contract really says, maybe what it says. Yeah, I, 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 I just don't have that comfort.
Why are you backing up? You don't, you want to speak again? We just have some more questions, Adam. And I, I agree that this might be a very good deal, but it's something that we could end up, uh, short sighted on and that's, that our job is to protect our taxpayers to the best of our ability. And so my feeling is, as Tim was put down to me a second ago, we table this.
At the very minimum.
At the very minimum. New business, fire contracts. So I would take a motion to accept the fire contracts, get them signed and.
For you to sign them.
For me to sign them and get them back to the fire department. We have them in possession. Um, I think their, the fire contracts that they're offering are very good and, uh, our fire department has done a nice job. The new truck is in?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Uh, I know somebody had bought you one of your trucks already. Call me if you're going to buy them. So anyway, I'll take a, a motion for myself on the fire contracts.
I would definitely make that motion.
Thank you. Second? All in favor?
All right.
Carrie. The next business, um, at this point in time, I think right now, I'd like to just monitor what's going on in the community. Uh, we've, Darrell's got one officer, uh, who's managed to, uh, scoundrel free. We heard Mr. Comett say a few minutes ago, that is a huge issue. So I'm hoping that we will address that to the best of our ability. We're not going to, but I think the word's gonna get out that the village is off-limits to ATVs. That we're trying to run a quiet community and this isn't the place for them. Uh, so, right now, let's, let's see how it goes. I know that, uh, if you, if you wanna read some other areas, Syracuse impounds them and you pay $2,000 to get them back. New Haven, Connecticut, they impound them and crush them. Go on the internet and read it. And they crushed them.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, it does. I guess I wouldn't drive in that community. I guess that sounds a mess. But I do feel that if you look at this map, we don't have a trail system in this county. We have a road system. And this isn't put out by me. This is put out by Lewis County. I know right now, and with friends that I have in Glenfield, and I'm not talking about my mother, I'm talking about others that are very upset right now with what's going on in Glenfield. And I think you're gonna hear from them. That being said, that, Mayor, natural, I'll leave that.
Mayor. A suggestion. We have the police report here. Could we add another line on that? ATVs, UTVs?
Did we have that discussion, Darrell?
You know what I mean? And then we know what, what's going on.
So I actually give you a quick number too. So since January 1st, we've had roughly between ten and twelve ATV complaints or interactions. It's not, um, do we catch them all? Absolutely not.
No, you're not going to. And I get that.
So if we put it right out here, we can see monthly what happens, you know what I mean?
Yep. You can do that.
Well, Mr. Comett made the remark. He didn't always wanna ask that question. He was here on something else. And he said, it's all the time. So...
Well, I, I have a question. And only because this has been brought to my attention. Um, how many of those violations that are village police officers have written have been dismissed by the court?
Half so far.
Half?
The other two are...
Fifty percent? That's ridiculous.
I know.
What can we do about that?
Once you write the ticket...
I mean, if the tickets are being dismissed, what's the point of writing the ticket?
That's what my officers feel.
Well, and here, here's my feeling on that. They've done their job.
Absolutely.
If that truly is the case, that becomes an issue. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Burrows, if that's an issue, that, that can go to another level.
It'd be an officer court administration. I mean, if, if, if they're dismissed for legitimate reason, then they're dismissed for legitimate reason. But if it's not, then that, that would be a question for the officer court administration. I, I, I don't know why they're being dismissed. I, I don't know. I'm not involved with it.
I mean, fifty percent seems excessive.
I can tell you that, I think, I'm not gonna say in the village, but I'm gonna say in the county, that I think lack of law enforcement on this issue is a problem.
Well, I don't think we have lack of law enforcement. I think we have a lack of...
Court enforcement.
Court enforcement.
I think, I think if you get a report from the sheriff's office, you'll find, I think you'll find just the opposite.
Well, I'm not worried about the county. I'm worried about the village.
Well, so, so what you're saying is, Tony, what you're saying is, don't write any tickets and just let it go.
No, no. That is absolutely the opposite of what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, we need to put pressure on our judicial system to enforce the tickets that are being dismissed.
So, so I guess the question is, we need to go to the court, find out how many tickets they have and how many they dismiss.
I'm already lying.
He's already lying.
Give me that report. I don't, I don't have it. Okay? I'd like that. Because if that's an issue, then we'll deal with that also.
That's absolutely true.
Do you see what reason they bend it and master?
Yeah, there's a reason.
But I, I think, I think it's wrong for us at, at our level to just ignore the situation. I think we continue on and we deal with the other part.
I don't believe we are ignoring the situation.
But what I'm saying is, and his remark is, it doesn't pay the right tickets. What I'm saying is, I get it.
If the judge isn't, if the judge is gonna throw the ticket away, I fully agree with him. They're wasting their time. But we need to make the judge enforce the ticket.
We're still writing them. They're not getting a free pass. I don't want you to think that. It's just frustrating for my officers. That's what I'm...
Yeah, I'd like that report, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
And I would say that...
I haven't written a email.
I would send, I would say, continue as you were doing. And we now are, are tolling them. And, uh, boy, if that doesn't send a message, nothing will. Boy, then we go to the next step.
It already has. It's already got out.
Okay. Permission to dispose, dispose court records.
Need a motion?
Yes. You have the, you have the, uh...
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion. We give you permission to do that?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Close. Motion carried. We have budget amendments that Wendy has provided us. I'll take a motion for those amendments to be made.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
All in favor?
All right.
Close. Carrie, you're up.
Mickey, you've been waiting all day.
So the next rate guide for me is January 22nd, 6 o'clock, Towne Willman. And also just let everyone know too, that, uh, so Chris Ward elect the secretary for, and treasurer for RACOG. She's retiring. So at the last board meeting, they did approve Rachel Berry as a secretary treasurer for RACOG. So she's now overlapping a little bit right now and learning the, what she needs from Chris until she retires. So she'll be taking over in January. Uh, the RACOG Youth and Development Summit is set for March 19th. Uh, we do tentatively have Ryan Pache and Tim Haunt scheduled to be a couple of presenters there. We are looking at having a little bit more agriculture focus for the morning session. Probably reaching out to Kraft to see if we can get somebody from there, maybe come to speak. Um, and we'll be talking about some other topics too there. But we'll be finalizing that agenda hopefully as we get closer here in a month or two. Uh, the student activity outreach, uh, actually I went to Copenhagen School yesterday morning and talked to three classes there about the service student activity program. Um, students have until this Friday to sign up. Uh, right now we have nine students, uh, that are signed up for the program. Last year we had eleven. And so we might get a few more, um, by Friday, but... So we'll wait on that. And then the first day of that program will actually be next Thursday, October 23rd. Um, will be our first day of the classroom program for that. We do have, uh, five mentors who are gonna help out, actually. Joe is over here is one of them. And we have Jenna from Naturally Lewis. Uh, we have, uh, somebody's gonna come down from Lewis County Search and Rescue to be a mentor. Linda North, a trustee over for Village Krogan. And also we have Debbie Atkins, who's a carpaliter chamber cameras director. So we'll have five mentors for the program. And then, uh, the RACOG Youth Committee will be meeting end of October. And so we do have two, two of the committee members still continuing that were on last year on the RACOG Student Board. They'll be continuing on that. We'll probably pick up maybe, I think, hopefully a couple more out of the civic service student activity program. We're also gonna reach out to schools about their youth representative, cause now each school has a youth representative on their board to see if maybe they wanna sit on the RACOG Youth Committee, cause then they can connect local government to schools and that and get both sides of the thing. So we are gonna reach out and see about that. And then, uh, and I will mention too, that Lawville, Lawville Academy has, uh, accepted, I guess, the offer. Um, we put it out to all school districts in RACOG about sending five students and one or two chaperones to the local government conference we have at Turning Stone. And Lawville Academy was the first one to get back and say that they would. So they are planning on, uh, following through that. And that'll be on April 21st is our local government conference, uh, down in Turning Stone. So we'll be having some students hopefully from this area heading down there for that. And Copenhagen's already said that they wanna send students next year. And they'll play backup this year in case Lawville has to back out. So, um, so hopefully we'll have some students. Before it was all mostly Oneida County schools, just cause it's closer to Turning Stone. But I asked if it could be, uh, brought up here to RACOG and see if we could get some schools' interest up here. And Tugil Commission's willing to do that, so. And we, and they cover all the registration for the students and the chaperones. Uh, the wastewater operator training, that is on hold. They're now looking for an instructor, again, for that. So they had somebody kinda in mind, but they're maybe taking a different job. So kind of hold there, but, so they reposted that. Um, and so they are looking again for an instructor. They're willing to work with whoever. They're willing to do it. Uh, so if you hear of anybody, pass that around. And then the strategic plan, we are still hoping to do a strategic plan for, uh, RACOG. And I think the goal is maybe to apply in May to Naturally Lewis, the funding to do the strategic plan. And we're hoping to get the youth involved, so that's where that youth committee could come in, so they could be a part of that. So, um, we're hoping to have that coming to fruition. And other than that, that's pretty much it. Um, may I, I guess? Any questions?
Mayor. Um, it's not on the agenda, but Matt's here for a groundwater update.
My turn?
Yeah, sorry, Matt.
He's over there.
That's when I'm showing up, like, last meal. Yep.
So, uh, they are, the last month, you guys voted on, um, hiring or purchasing the screens for these test wells. And the, uh, they've been ordered last month. They were supposed to be here, so we can start installing them next week. They're not in yet. They still may come in the end of this week and we still might be on track for next week. But right now, it's, it's kind, it's more tentative than it was a week ago when, I think Danny, you were on the email. I know Paul was on the email from Claude Cormier, who's their hydrogeologist. So that work is, is scheduled for next week, but the materials aren't in yet. So I'm not sure we'll be able to put those screens in next week. But it's still, still tracking to get them in this, uh, this fall, so. That was...
Do you think that's gonna be an issue?
No, I mean, it's...
They're gonna be anything?
Yeah, yeah. They'll get it in, uh, I, I guess it's a bigger, the, the whole market is struggling to get these screens for wells, but, uh, they're hard to get right now. But, uh, but, uh, they've been ordered, they've been ordered for a month now. And, uh, as soon as they get in, they'll...
Rick has said, when they get here...
Yeah, he's ready to go. Claude Cormier is ready to be here, so we'll go, they'll get that, that done. And that's, uh, they install the screens, based on what they're seeing when they're installing the screens, they'll, they'll size the pump to, to really determine how much water they think we could get out of the aqua, out of those two sites, so.
I have to wait until it's time for that.
Okay.
Yeah, I was hard to wait the way.
On the correspondence, uh, we received a, a lot from Terry Taylor and Sidewalks. And Paul has got that situation.
So I've got, I've got a contractor coming up to take a look at the issue.
There's an issue, not with the, that's causing Sidewalk to do that, which is, uh, one of our culverts.
There, well, there's just an erosion on the backside of the sidewalk and we do have a culvert pipe there.
We're talking West State Street?
Yes.
Okay.
On the east side?
No, I don't know.
You ever heard of this?
I'm very low-earthen.
I'm looking at, uh...
It's my favorite, it's my favorite chunk of sidewalk from the VFW. Shut up, Darrell.
I'm looking at, uh, any work that's being done there will not cost the village anything. I've got enough chips money and...
I walk up there too, so.
I'm looking at this project not costing the village any money. I've got enough money, my chips money to move things around, so.
And we received a letter from Ashley Parks, basically concerned about the crosswalk. And, uh, you know, they should like to see, or they'd like to see cameras put up in all these crosswalks. And I, I just don't know how you're gonna do that. It's, you know, there's, I, I get it, uh, but there's only so much that, that the village can do. Mike Comett was here. He spoke. He's on the correspondence. Other than that, uh, we've gone through everything at this time. I'd like to take a motion to close the public hearings, uh, and then we will vote on them. Uh, Resolution 18 and 19 for local law 2025-9 and 20201-1365-C. I take a motion, uh, first we'll do local law, uh, public...
Close.
I make a motion. I'm sorry. Thank you. Public hearing. Second? Gina? All in favor?
All right.
Close, carried. All right, I'll, I'll take a motion to pass the resolution for 18 and 19 on local law 2025-9 and the repeal on 201-1365-C. Motion?
You have three different motions, or?
Yeah.
Each resolution.
Okay. I'll take a motion on Resolution 18.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Uh, roll call vote, Tony?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Chuck?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Resolution 19, I'll make a motion, or up the resolution, I'll make, on the resolution. Second?
I'll second.
Uh, roll call vote, Tim?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Tony?
Yes.
Yes.
Local law 2025-9, repeal and replace chapter 201-1365-C, a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote, Tim?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Tony?
Yes.
Public hearing, Resolution 20, local law 2025-10, amend 181892, 189-62, stands for seven, motion. I'll make a motion. All in favor? Or roll call vote, Gina?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Chuck?
Yes.
Tim, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, and the law, the law.
Motion for the law, 2025-10. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, Gina?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Chuck?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Carried. Officer and committee reports, uh, Mr. Burrows is up first. Nothing to report. Uh, I have nothing. Clerk Treasurer?
Uh, Treasurer's report is in your pocket.
Mr. Artlib, Chief of Police, how do you think the report?
Uh, yeah, I email, or I didn't email, I printed off and gave Wendy the monthly report. Um, I just wanna give a, a huge thank you to, uh, it was on the media, it was on, uh, Nick had it, it was on the news. But, um, thank you to Jerry J. Cott from Ad-Rundack E-Bikes. The shop's right here, um, on Boswick Street. He supplied us with that e-bike and all the bells and whistles and safety equipment. And it didn't cost the village anything, not, not a dollar. Um, and then we have it at our disposal, so I just wanna thank Jerry for that.
That's awesome.
We've, we've already used it a ton. We've had it all summer. Jerry and I just got together for the media release, so, but... Yep. Yeah, so I just wanna thank Jerry for that, cause it's, that was huge. It's almost $7,000, so. Um, that's all I have.
Mr. Burrows?
Oh, I have a few things. So Monday, October 20th, we will start milling and paving will come after that. I'm not sure the dates of the paving. Um, the streets will be East State Street from Fast Track down to Highland. Um, Church Street, uh, East State Street's four corners will get redone. And from River Street up by the 801 housing, down to the four corners. Um, been waiting a long time. Uh, leaf pickup is going well. Uh, people are, people are putting them not out in the roads, or keeping them on the, uh, on the side of the curb, which I appreciate. And they're not mixing them in, so that's a good thing. Um, just wanted to let people know again that we do have cameras at sewer plant. Um, we've had a few issues and they are being prosecuted. Uh, so, um, the sewer plant is not the waste, uh, solid waste place. Don't take your garbage down there, cause we will catch you. And the other thing I wanted to say was, the, uh, when you were talking about the crosswalks from Ashley Parks there, um, it's one of my pet peeves, is people parking in the handicap area when they're not supposed to, or parked in bad areas. And I know Darrell probably gets sick of me, but I called him. But I'll tell you, the police department does a hell of a job. Every time I call them, they're there, writing the ticket.
Parking's gotten a lot better.
Yes. I, I commend Darrell and his guys. They do a heck of a job. I know he probably gets sick of me calling him, but it's just, they do a great job.
We had a dirt bike go out through town this morning. My wife noticed it and I noticed that, but with our license plate, but we weren't in a opportune place to catch him. But it's, it's happened. Those kind of things are happening.
He was actually getting video footage for the dumping complaint that Paul had, so that's where he was.
Do I have anything else, Wendy?
I'm not. I'm just...
That means you forgot.
Are you done?
Really? Yes, I'm done.
Capital planning, we have nothing, I'm sure. Personnel, I know you're working on contracts. Anything else you wanna talk about?
I have a meeting again this month.
Two meetings.
Both of them.
Yep. Okay, with each.
So we're trying to get all the information from them mainly, so we can get started with, be able to...
It's going pretty good, I think. Hope you have...
Speaking of contracts, we do need to bring up about the village and town for this building. The contract that we have with them. Remember, you talked about, about it?
Yeah. Uh, and I talked to the briefing about, about it. We've got to get that done. It's before the end of the year, correct?
No.
That's from last year?
No, they're believed.
Oh, it's not?
They're under the understanding that it's been approved by you and I.
I got the email.
But we, we've talked about it. Wendy and I have talked about it. The old contract states town is 50, 55, and village is whatever.
We will, we will, gather up by the next morning, so we'll, we'll talk about that with you.
I, I guess in our opinion, I don't think anything should change from the last contract. I mean, there's nothing different in there.
So let's just renew it?
Well, we need, yeah, permission from the board to...
Right.
I'll make a motion. Continue that contract.
That is what we were coming to you for, because we need to...
Where's the contract? Um, I don't have it. I was emailed 10 minutes before the meeting.
Yeah, I would like to read it over prior to the preview meeting.
Let's, let's have to put it on you, Jennifer, for next month.
Okay.
Yeah, you want to read it from, I agree.
Same as it was last year.
Finance? Mr. Austin, is your turn?
All right, I've got just a few things. The, I'm happy to look for a junior program. Has, we have our first member of the junior program, so he's been around. I've got three more pending, so once we get paperwork back from him, we'll hopefully increase those numbers. The new truck is supposed to be delivered at 4:00 PM tomorrow, so you shall see. But it is, it is in, it's up in northern New York now. It's not in Pennsylvania anymore. Our sales rep has it now.
Well, but the old here is not northern New York.
So it should be, if all goes good, it should be coming tomorrow. The older engine, the old engine three, which is the 1988 and our 1997 Mini, were both sold through auction, and we were fairly pleased with the, with what we got for that.
8100.
So, you know, between the two of them, we got, I think it was 18,000 and 19,000 between both of them, so...
Yeah, it says, "Scratch, it's not a fire, you can put it out themselves."
So, uh, some updates are going at the fire hall. We actually just, today, they were, our overhead door was there, installing new door, overhead door openers, so we bumped in those. Those are original to the building, is what I was told, so they're quite old, so...
I learned at school today.
And then other than that, this month, it's fire prevention month, so I've had people out at Head Start. Uh, Lawville preschool came over, hand in hand, so I just want to thank my guys that were willing to go out to those places to do some fire prevention.
The young kids eat that up. They just love that.
So that's all I got.
Thank you so much. Police Department. Darrell, anybody? Planning Board and ZBA.
Uh, meeting's tomorrow, right?
Next week. Next week.
Next week.
Municipal Board?
We didn't have a meeting last week.
Town of Lawville tomorrow. County?
Nothing to do with the village. I did attend. Again, I want to say that I am meeting with Megan from the county to go over some regulations